Really hoping for a robust conversation with council members as we get to to the finish line with this first ever to your action plan. Today, also during our meeting, we will have an opportunity to hear from the staff. They will be providing several updates on the progress that is happening across HCFC, including the exciting work that is underway to launch the state's first ever homeless data integration system. So I'm looking forward to hearing from our executive officer Julie Lowe as she provides a more detailed update on that. Before, you know, before I move on to beginning the the meeting and the official business, just want to take a moment, of course, to acknowledge the tremendous, you know, effort that is underway by Governor Newsom and this entire administration. You know, we're continuing to move with speed with a sense of compassion and a commitment to equity as we continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. And also, of course, as we continue to look for solutions to address the economic damage and the economic fallout of this pandemic. I'm excited to share, and I'm sure you all had an opportunity earlier today to see that the governor signed into law a $7.6 billion comprehensive economic relief package that really builds on the earlier actions from just about a month ago that were focused on preventing evictions and also providing emergency rental assistance. This, you know, relief package that was announced just earlier this morning will provide direct one-time stimulus checks to about 5.7 million low-income Californians across the state. And so we know that, you know, many of our neighbors, many of our friends, many of, you know, our family members are continuing to to hurt through this, you know, pandemic. And so this comes at at a very important, you know, time. And I also, you know, want to pause to acknowledge also the just amazing work that is underway led by Secretary Galley and Secretary Richardson. Secretary Richardson, of course, leads the the state's government operations agency and Secretary Galley leads the state's Health and Human Services Agency. They have been working nonstop to develop a robust plan to accelerate our efforts in terms of just the distribution of the COVID-19 vaccine. As of this morning, we are at about 7.5 million vaccines that have been administered across the state, and that's 7.5 out of the 8.8 million that have been delivered to the state from the federal government. So again, really impressive. I think you all have seen that counties and cities are partnering with the state to open up mega centers and mega sites to accelerate, of course, the the administration or distribution of the vaccine. In the space of homelessness, we are working very closely with the governor's office, with the Departments of Public Health, the Department of Social Services, Health and Human Services, and also with our federal partners at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide additional resources and tools to prepare providers who are serving individuals that are experiencing homelessness with, you know, the resources to prepare for the distribution of the vaccine. We're, of course, continuing to work closely to prioritize this population, and so we'll continue to keep you all updated on on those efforts. So with that, you know, just again, enormous gratitude to all of you that are working day and night to ensure that communities are continuing to stay safe and healthy during this very difficult time. So with that, I'm going to ask maybe Evan now to go ahead and do roll call, so we can go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much, Secretary. So roll call. So Council Chair Lourdes Castro Ramirez.
Present.
Council Vice Chair Emilio Ramirez.
Present.
Council Member Amy Anderson.
Here.
Council Member Russell Atterbury.
Here.
Council Member Alexis Berries.
Here.
Council Member Gina Bukieri Harrington.
Here.
Council Member Corinne Buchanan.
Present.
Council Member Donald Kavir.
Here.
Council Member J.C. Cooper.
Present.
Council Member Gail Gilman. Council Member Jody Ketch aside. Council Member Jennifer Loving.
Present.
Council Member Gary McCoy. Council Member Toks Omashakan.
Present.
Council Member Joe Ukashiba.
Here.
And Council Member Gustavo Velazquez.
Here.
Uh, thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Evan. And just a point of personal privilege, I'd like to take an opportunity to acknowledge and congratulate Don Cavier. He has been appointed by the governor to serve as the Acting Executive Director of California's Housing Finance Agency. Congratulations, Don. And of course, that means that, you know, we the the former executive, you know, director Tia Patterson, Tia Bowman Patterson, who I think many of you know has has joined the Biden-Harris administration, which is, you know, an exciting sort of new journey for her, and we're, you know, so excited that she has been able to to be tapped to join the Office of Management and Budget. And, you know, she has really done a tremendous job leading CaliTAFA and bringing to be a leader in the space of both multifamily and homeownership programs. So, Don, I know that you're stepping into some big shoes, but you've been part of that team for many years, and so we're excited and looking forward, you know, to your leadership as the Acting Executive Director.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. I appreciate it.
Great. Okay, with that, I'd like to now maybe move to action item number two, which is the adoption of the meeting summary from our December 18 2020 meeting. I think everyone received the summary of our meeting. Just wanting wanting to know council members, if you have any comments, edits, or questions. Okay, hearing none. Because this is an action item, this is also an item that can be opened up for public comment. And so Evan would like to see if we have any public comment on this item.
Thank you, Secretary. So for anyone who would wish to make a public comment, please take a moment, locate the raised hand icon on your screen on your meeting window. If you're joined by telephone only, you can press star nine to indicate if you'd like to make a comment. So now would be the time, if you'd like to make a comment, raise your hand or press star nine. Looks like we have one comment on this item. As a reminder, or as an informational, you will have three minutes, maximum of three minutes to make a public comment. And until the general public comment period, we do ask comments to be related to the agenda item we're currently on. It looks like looks like we have one raised hand. So it looks like Vernon Price. You're able to make a comment?
I do apologize, sir. I prematurely raised my hand. I just wanted to speak at the general public comment, so I do apologize for that.
No problem. We will have time for that later. Thank you. All right, I'm seeing no comments on this item.
Okay, so seeing that there are no comments, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call.
Sure. Council Chair Lourdes Castro Ramirez.
Yes.
Council Vice Chair Emilio Ramirez.
Yes.
Council Member Amy Anderson.
Yes.
Council Member Russell Atterbury.
Yes.
Council Member Alexis Berries.
Yes.
Council Member Gina Bukieri Harrington.
Yes.
Council Member Corinne Buchanan.
Yes.
Council Member Donald Kavir.
Yes.
Council Member J.C. Cooper.
I was not present, so I'm going to abstain.
Oh, okay. Council Member Jody Ketch aside. Council Member Jody Ketch aside.
Yes.
Yes. Council Member Jennifer Loving.
Yes.
Council Member Toks Omashakan.
Yes.
Council Member Joe Ukashiba. Council Member Joe Ukashiba. No response. Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Council Member Gustavo Velazquez.
Yes.
Great. Uh, thank you. That motion does, we do have approval for that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Evan, and thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to agenda, item number three. This is consideration of the HCFC Action Plan for Preventing and Ending Homelessness in California. As I mentioned during my opening remarks, this is a special council council meeting to continue the work that we started several months ago on developing a combined vision and action plan that will further our efforts in preventing and ending homelessness across the state. I think, as you all know, it's a two-year plan. This will be the first ever plan that the council has developed, and so we're very eager and excited to to get additional input and comments from each of you. Of course, this plan has not been developed in isolation. It has been a truly collaborative effort, working with council members, working with the governor's office, working with a number of state departments. But most importantly, or equally important, I should say, working very closely with extensive stakeholder input from members from across the state. I just, you know, want to sort of reiterate the significance and the importance of developing this, you know, collective document with a strong vision. I think that, you know, we all know that addressing and solving homelessness is it's, you know, it's a very it requires multi-sort of pronged strategies, but it also requires a commitment to work across systems and to look for ways to better integrate the way that we invest, the way that we co-invest. And, you know, this this plan lays out through a framework of increasing the state's leadership through a framework that is very action-oriented and also through a framework that recommits to developing a strong partnership and strong collaborative partnerships, not only between public entities, but between public and private and philanthropic entities, the opportunity for us to accelerate the work of preventing and ending homelessness in the state. Do want to, you know, take a minute to just acknowledge that for the state departments that serve on the council, I know that the last, you know, few months, you've been engaged in a number of conversations with our HCFC staff, really, you know, to identify the activities that you can commit to in this, you know, plan and in the first, you know, two years of the implementation of these activities and this action plan. And I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I know that you all have much on your plates and appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into identifying those activities that you are able to commit to as we continue addressing homelessness across the state. One other item that I all that I'd like to call out in terms of the presentation and the the plan that will be presented here shortly is the the importance of identifying metrics and committing to tracking and measuring our progress. I think it's, you know, critically important now more than ever that we also have good data that will help gauge and inform the work that we're doing. And so you'll hear in just a couple of minutes how we intend to track and measure our progress, and then also how we intend to leverage their data that were made available through the homeless data integrated integration system. Again, many thanks to to many of you on the council, really to all of you on the council, many of you that have joined us for this meeting for being part of this effort. This is, you know, a commitment to what I would call a housing-for-all agenda with with a focus on prevention, sheltering, permanent housing, and access to resources. And also a commitment to responding with a lens towards equity and in in really to looking at a comprehensive, more holistic approach to how we address homelessness in our cities, in our counties, and in our communities. One, you know, last, you know, comment that I will make before I turn it over to Deputy Secretary for Homelessness, Ellie Sutton, is you know, this plan is a living document, right? This is our first attempt at being very concrete about the actions and activities that we believe will accelerate our efforts, you know, to prevent and end homelessness. But because it's a living document, it means that it is a document that we will be revisiting quite frequently, both, you know, to either provide updates or to provide additional information or or to course correct if, you know, that is necessary. So, you know, it's, it belongs to all of us. I think we're we're building it together, and I do hope that you all feel a sense of shared responsibility in a sense of mutual accountability. Not only as we shape, you know, the action plan, but also as we move into the implementation of the action plan. So with that, I'd like to now hand it off to Deputy Secretary for Homelessness, Ellie Sutton. And also, also, I think Matthew Doherty has joined us. He has been a consultant working with us, consulting with us throughout this process and just, you know, want to say, you know, enormous gratitude, Matthew, for your guidance and, you know, bringing us this far. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to both of you now.
Great, thanks so much, Secretary. And so we are going to just spend a little bit of time on this action item going over the the process to date. And I will spend a little bit of time. I know it's a lengthy document, so we want to spend just a little bit of time going over the the highlights of the document before we get into discussion, which is is our main reason for for getting together today. So with that, I think I will hand it over to Matthew to just sort of walk through the work we've done to date and the coordination efforts to date.
Great. Thank you, Ally, and thank you, Secretary, and thanks, everyone, for your input all along the way and for the responsiveness when we've been sending out questions and requesting information, especially back from the state agencies, sometimes pretty short timeframes, we know. So next slide, please. I just want to give a quick review of the process that has gotten us to where we are and gotten us to the draft that was sent out last week. So we started really kicking off this process in August with individualized discussions with every council member. Sometimes council members brought their partners into those dialogues, but we had one-on-one dialogues that then shaped some of the conversations to follow at the council meetings. We've been doing, as the secretary mentioned, extensive stakeholder input all the way, starting back in August and running well into this month. And the draft document in Exhibit B of the appendix lists all of the many organizations who have been represented in those stakeholder input discussions. We then held a special council meeting in September specifically focused on the action planning. We discussed the themes and the priorities that were emerging from the conversations with the council members, and also especially from the stakeholder input sessions to that point, and sought the council and the public's input on priorities and objectives. Next slide, please. At the October council meeting, we then presented and discussed draft objectives for the action plan. And the council adopted those drafts to service the structure for further planning discussions and stakeholder conversations so that we could start to dive below just priorities and intent and really get down to conversations and organized ways around activities. Those objectives have remained steady throughout and are the same objectives that are reflected in the draft that was sent out last week. The December council meeting, then we presented a vision for the action plan. Ally's going to review that in just a moment. We also looked at refined language for the five action areas that serve as the backbone structure for the action plan. We talked about the planned approach to the descriptions of activities and measures that would be included in the plan. And you'll see that structure actually has followed through to the document that was prepared for this meeting as well. That meeting in December, we also had extensive materials that described some of the current and planned activities that would be embedded into the action plan, but also a lot of information about emerging priorities, potentially additional activities aligned with the adopted objectives that had bubbled up through state agency conversations, state department conversations, or through stakeholder input. And we had some discussion with all of you and with the public around state actions that should be prioritized and supportive of those objectives. Next slide, please. So then between December and today, we've been doing a lot of work to draft the content and to refine the activities that are presented in the draft document. We continued to have pretty extensive stakeholder input discussions, really much more focused at the specifics of prioritized activities. We began to the process of reviewing the draft content with state agencies. There is still some of that to come, and we'll we'll talk about that when we talk about next steps. So that process of finalizing some of the content is still underway. And then that culminated in the, you know, publicly available draft version shared and posted last week. And I'm hoping that as you downloaded that document, maybe printed it off, that it felt like a culmination of conversations and a logical extension of the conversations that we had been having. So then at today's meeting, we're going to review content. We're going to discuss especially some planned working groups that are described within the draft action plan. We'll have an opportunity to discuss any planned activities or potential activities. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps and updates for the from the state departments in the core in the process of finalizing content that goes into the action plan. That's again, the where we've been so far, and then next slide, please. And so what's that resulted in is a draft document that, again, I'm really hoping feels like a logical extension of all the work we've been doing together over the last many months. It's organized by the five action areas that have been consistently used throughout this planning process. It includes the 15 objectives that are maybe with some minor wording adjustments, but are essentially the same as the objectives that were adopted in October. Includes now 80, and and then some activities for those activities, we're identifying lead and collaborating departments. We'll be making sure we have identified timeframes for all those activities, and we're identifying performance measures for each of those activities so that we're building in the expectation of accountability into the plan itself. The plan also describes five planned working groups that are focused on some of the highest priorities issues that require further interagency and cross-sector coordination. And we're projecting the formation of those working groups over the next 12 months or so. And then the the document also better describes the data that we will be using to measure and assess progress. And Ally will talk about both the working groups and the data in her agenda. So now I am going to turn it back to Ally.
Great, thanks, Matthew. And you can go to the next slide, please. So you you may all have noticed, we've added some some sort of framing or visioning statements at the beginning of of the action plan. And so really, the the vision statement that we put forward really is to explain the why. So why are we building this plan? And what does the council need to represent? Sort of why are why are we pulling this together? And so you'll see in there the the vision that we're sort of claiming for the council and the state's work is really around increased leadership from the state, making sure that we collectively have the right, the right mutual accountability to identifying and supporting both short and long-term solutions to preventing and ending homelessness in our state, to having some purposeful, action-oriented coordination and alignment across our different efforts and programs, and to really double down on stronger collaborative partnerships with public and private partners, partners across communities. So a real intentional effort to make sure that we're hearing from those that are doing the work on the ground and experiencing homelessness themselves. Next slide, please. So in the pursuit of that, we also sort of put up a few things that we want to, we want to acknowledge and recognize as we go into this work. And so really acknowledging that responding to homelessness in California, or really anywhere across the country, must address and reduce racial inequities in the risks and experiences of homelessness. So you'll see, as we've talked about quite a bit, there's, there's a lot within the the action plan on how to to address some of those racial inequities. We're also recognizing and acknowledging that progress is multi-pronged and multi-year, that this is not something that we will be able to build our way out of anytime soon, and that we really need every element of the response system to be working together for for the needs of people experiencing homelessness. And then the next bit, the state agencies must act with shared responsibility and mutual accountability. As the secretary said in her opening remarks, this is a plan for all of our departments and all of our council members, and that we together are implementing effective strategies, looking at the data we have, holding ourselves to performance measures and metrics and sort of doing that with a with a shared responsibility across the council. So laying that that vision up at the front. Next slide, please. And then the next sort of piece of of the action plan, we wanted to make sure we 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 put forward before diving in too far was some key principles and practices that we believe have to underpin the work that we will be taking on with this action plan. So there's a quite a bit more detail within in the the action plan itself, but for just the sake of time, really focusing on pursuing racial equity and justice, creating solutions for the whole diversity of people experiencing homelessness, really understanding that there are lots of reasons people become homeless and lots of different kinds of interventions people need once they find themselves experiencing homelessness, and that we want to be able to provide all of the individualized services and attention people need. Also seeking and valuing the expertise of people with lived experiences of homelessness. You'll see the commitment to to creating a live expertise board within the the council staff, aligning state activities with housing-first approaches. As you all know, that is our key statutory mandate for this council, and we stand continued commitment to that effort. We heard from many of you the need to balance the crisis response system, really understanding that we have the highest rate of unsheltered homelessness in the country with the acknowledgement and understanding that the only way to solve homelessness is through permanent health solutions. So really making sure we can balance both of those things in our efforts. And again, this shared responsibility, accountability, and efficiency metric. So more detail on the actual action action plan about sort of what we we believe those things to do, but really wanted to state our our principles and practices upfront at the beginning of of the the plan. Next slide, please. So then, as as Matthew mentioned, and we have laid out five planned working groups. I just want to mention that these working groups were drafted and created really to focus on the most critical or cross-functional or really underdeveloped areas that that kept coming up in our in our feedback and stakeholder groups. So really understanding that to do that, you know, it's sort of each of these work groups you'll see within the activities are being charged with a set of of specific action plan activities. The first sort of being specific to state staff, a real clear need for a working group around maximizing the impacts of state funding and programs. In the action plan itself, there's quite a few things that this council, that this working group is charged to to accomplish, but including such things as seeing where there's opportunity for streamlining across different different funding streams and applications, things like that, improving the access to funding for programs or or programs for organizations deeply engaged with historically marginalized communities, including tribal communities. Really, a quite a quite a robust set of things that that working group is is currently set to tackle. The next being around racial equity in responses to homelessness, understanding that this is one of those things that everyone at the table needs to be a part of. at the table needs to be a part of. Quite a few strategies around that, that this, this working group would also tackle. Another one, tailored strategies for parenting and home, and ending homelessness for youth and young adults. Really understanding that, that that needs to be a cross functional area to ensure the best strategies are being put forward. Strengthening employment opportunities and outcomes. That is a, a sort of an area within our action plan that, that we did not feel like we had, had as much to show for the work we were doing there. And really felt we needed to, to double down on some of the efforts there in a cross functional way. And then preventing homelessness among people re-entering communities from correctional settings. We hear quite a bit about that in our, in our stakeholder feedback as well. So starting with those, that don't mean those will be the ones that we have forever. But given that this is a couple of year action plan, really felt like the most critical work plans and work groups to put together, given the feedback we heard. Next slide please. And then obviously we have a strong commitment to accountability and performance measures. And so really diving in deeply about the kind of data we would be using to measure our progress, including the homeless data integration system that the secretary mentioned. All of the robust data that the US Department of Housing and Urban Development has, as well as we know, our California Department of Education partners have quite a bit of, of data that is often not brought into the conversation that we want to make sure we are including here. And all of this being really used to assess the impact of our efforts to document and analyze racial inequities and to refine the action plans, objectives and activities. So there's quite a bit of the actual measures listed in the action plan, but just for the sake of time, we'll just refer folks to page 13 if they're interested in diving in more on, on those pieces. And with that, I'm going to kind of back over to Matthew to just very briefly remind you all of the, the various action areas and the 15 objectives that were, were voted and approved on earlier this, this past year.
Great. Next slide please. Actually know that this graphic is actually hard to read on the screen. It is embedded into your document as well. The, the team is working with the graphic designer to make sure we end up with visuals that are easily usable and readable in, in multiple settings. So don't expect it. And that's why I'd be able to read that on the screen. I know I can't with my, even with my glasses on. But there aren't any significant changes from all of the, the prior versions of the objectives that you approved in October. So the first action area focuses on overarching efforts to strengthen our systems. Things that underpin a lot of the other work that follows. With objective one focusing again on issues of racial equity and justice. Objective two focusing on partnership and receiving guidance from people with lived expertise from their experiences of homelessness. Objective three focuses on supporting interjurisdictional and regional planning and cross sector efforts. Objective four focuses on income and assets and employment. Objective five focuses on disaster preparedness and making sure we're, we're thinking about the needs of people experiencing homelessness prior to disasters. As well as during and after disasters. And then objective six focuses on strengthening communications and public education. Next slide please. Action area two focuses specifically on trying to address the needs of people while they are unsheltered. Recognizing the goal is not to keep people unsheltered, but also as an objective seven, knowing we need to address their health and safety needs while they are still unsheltered. And objective eight focuses on helping make sure we're providing access to necessary services and supports. And doing that in a way that effectively reaches people who are unsheltered. Action area three focuses on providing safe and effective sheltering and interim housing opportunities. Making sure we're expanding the, the effective opportunities that are available within communities under objective nine. And objective 10 focuses on making sure we're embedding their access to the kinds of services that people need while they are in those settings and while they are on their pathways to permanent housing. Next slide please. Action area four focuses on expanding and ensuring equitable access to permanent housing in our communities. With objective 11 focusing on housing first practices and principles and rehousing efforts. Objective 12, 12 focuses on expanding supply through production efforts. Objective 13 focuses on providing access to short and longer term forms of rental assistance. So here trying to really address the full range of the types of housing opportunities that people need on a permanent basis. And then finally, the fifth action area focuses on preventing Californians from experiencing the crisis of homelessness. And here, objective 14 focuses especially on trying to strengthen prevention efforts within systems that are already serving people who may be experiencing instability or exiting those services and systems. And preventing those exits from resulting in homelessness. And objective five, 15 focuses specifically on strengthening targeted homelessness prevention and diversion practices in communities. Obviously that's a very quick run through, but again, these have stayed consistent through the planning process. So I'm hoping they're feeling familiar and things that you're, you're recognizing and seeing as an out, an output of the conversation. And then the next slide please. So here just a quick overview. So for each of these objectives, we've now identified a set of activities. Within the draft plan, those activities are described. Some of those descriptions may still get slightly refined as we engage in further dialogue with departments and some departments are also considering some additional activities that might get added. We're identifying the lead departments. We've identified that in virtually every case, but there are still a few activities in which the lead department still needs to be confirmed or identified. And we're also trying to identify the collaborating departments, which includes both departments represented on the council. And also what times when we need to partner with departments who are not a part of the council. And then for each activity, we're expecting to have a pretty clear communication of the timeframe. And that's an area in which agents, departments are still confirming some of the timeframes with us. And then we're, we're building in not just the overarching performance measures and data that Ally talked about, but for every activity, a sense of how are we measuring the implementation of this plan? Through process measures, output measures and when possible outcome measures. I mean, in many cases, we're still finalizing determining those measures with departments as well. All of that work, we'll talk about the next steps, but all of that work is expected to be wrapped up over the next couple of weeks. So that we'll be ready to go by the March. And I'm going to turn it back to Ally.
Hey, thanks Matthew. You could go to the next slide Evan. So we're in the next action item, we're going to sort of talk through more the, the process to get us to approval and hear a little bit more from the departments about their work they're doing. But just wanted to spend a, a good amount of time walking through with you all, the, the draft you received. And just had some sort of pointed questions, but obviously comments of any kind are, are more than welcome. But really sort of starting with the, the background content, the explanatory, explanatory content we talked about and the information about performance measures. Wondering if there's anything additional there you think that we should be including in the action plan? And then, you know, if, if on that as well, any input you would have regarding the proposed or agency work groups described in, in the action plan. Just hearing a little bit of feedback on, and how folks read through that and the feelings they have on what we might have missed or, or, or believe that we should be thinking more about as, as we finalize. I'm not above calling on specific council members if I have to. Would really love to hear feedback and folks are getting a sense of, I know it's quite a lot of material, but we hope that this is quite responsive to, to what we heard from everybody, but I would love to hear if there's things we missed.
Yeah, Ally, this Russ from Vets Affairs. Were you also asking for input for the proposed interagency working groups? That last part that within the action plan?
Yeah, sort of feedback on that. And I think you think we should be thinking about it on those. It'd be great.
I'd imagine you're already thinking about it, but just throwing in, thinking about scheduling for if there's several folks or if I just have one person that might want to be on several different action plans or working groups. Then scheduling of that might be a little bit difficult. So just keep that in mind.
That's a really good feedback. Thanks Russ. And, and we are thinking about staggering the, the, the sort of creation of those work groups in, in a way that allows us to, to hopefully manage that with staff. But that's, I really appreciate that feedback. I think that will be something we need to manage as we get these all launched.
I raised my, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think I see your hand raised.
Yeah. So I raised my hands. I'll go ahead. This is Alexis. I wanted to comment, bringing your attention to page 11, section three and four. So what comes to mind for me is like, how are we looking to form this group? I'm curious of the strategies around identifying candidates. Additionally, like the employment for young people was super problematic pre-pandemic. And studies now show that young people are at an extreme disadvantage coming into, I think like a 25% unemployment rate. So knowing that, I guess my hope would be that this work group also includes experts on pandemic and recession. Affecting this population to achieve, you know, equitable representation. Also in the plan, I know that we recognize on page 12, we recognize that our youth are largely unsheltered. And my concern is that our state pandemic response team hasn't led to target unsheltered youth specifically. And then lastly, brings me, there's a memo on page 38, number seven. There's a memo circulating from J Bay that analyzes how Home Key was awarded. Their analysts of award, their analysis of awards found that Home Key did not serve homeless, unaccompanied youth in proportion to the representation in the homeless population. So the level of funding directed to unaccompanied homeless youth was actually like 18 times less than their representation and their population of homeless individuals. So I just want to point out that I just want to point out that the first round of Home Key did not reach young people equitably in that there is an opportunity to dedicate some of this year's proposed investments using a youth set aside. Eight. That's it.
Great.
Appreciate that feedback Alexis. That's really, really helpful. I was remembering a bunch of notes as you were talking.
I know, I'm sorry. That's a lie.
No, it's great. It's great.
And there's one thing I would flag about the working groups is I think the process of forming them is still to be determined. But each of the working groups would be charged of thinking about not just overarching strategy, but also subpopulation specific strategies so that the youth strategies don't just live with the youth working group. Every working group should be thinking about, is there a youth strategy? Is there a families with children strategy as our comment? So hopefully we'll, we'll get that broad representation in consideration.
I have a, a flag. This is JC Cooper with the Department of Healthcare Services. So I would just add for, for number five, preventing homelessness among people re-entering communities from correctional settings work group. DHCS has a pretty extensive justice involved in re-entry proposal within CalAim. That have a number of components that I think would be very beneficial here. Including a 30 day in reach within jails being proposed for a coordination, especially those with behavioral health services. And this is both juvenile as well as adults, just to be clear on that front. With the mandated behavioral health warm, warm handoff. And then of course, the enhanced care management proposal for re-entry is one of the target populations. And of course, the in lieu of, so would just flag that it would probably recommend DHCS be one of the participating departments there.
Complete oversight. I appreciate you flagging that and volunteering your department.
This is Jody. I wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Alexis was saying in terms of youth set asides and that there's an opportunity to look at that again. And I do think that that a larger youth set aside makes a lot of sense, particularly for rural communities who aren't able to do much with their small allocation. I can give an example, the Porterville allocation was $29,000 out of the heap funds. And there's just not a lot we can do with that. So looking at potentially like youth specific units, a larger youth set aside. But like making sure that we're really thinking about youth moving forward.
Yeah. And I would just, I would just quickly mention, I think that there's a lot we can do administratively. The action plan really doesn't address sort of additional funds or, or sort of gaps in funding so much. But I think this is the sort of thing that within that youth working group, we really want to talk more about and, and get some additional data on. Just from where we all sit, we don't hold the purse strings. So we're trying to do within what we have, we have control over, but do appreciate there's a lot on the youth side that we need to be rising up in, in the, the working group. And would mention specifically that if there's things we, we, we've charged the, the youth working group with a range of things. If there's additional things that we should be thinking about adding to that list. Would very much welcome that feedback either now or, or later before this finalizes. Appreciate that.
This is Gustav. I, I always miss where the raised hand is, but I always happen. So I appreciate the, how thoughtful you've all been in regards to the working groups. Especially around racial equity and youth and young adults and certainly the re-entering people re-entering from from correctional facilities. I just want to point out, you know, last year was, yeah, last year we published an analysis of impediments to fair housing here at HCD. We came up with a, it was really a multi-pronged approach that included recommendations and, and action steps to address 10 documented impediments. And that's, that's tied to, you know, general housing, access to housing. But also, also I would argue access to to homelessness services. And I think it will be important not to lose sight. And I'm just trying to see whether I can recommend something specific here. We explicitly are addressing certain groups, you know. I don't know how to kind of reflect on the fact that we are not, even though we're not calling out explicitly other groups that we're mindful. Thinking about people with disabilities, thinking about domestic violence survivors. Certainly seniors. I mean, there's a, there are other groups that I think are very important to, to note. And I don't think we're saying at, in any way through these five working groups that we are sort of ignoring other populations. But, but it's something I think that we need to think about a little more, how to, how to reflect on on those other populations who are largely affected by by homelessness. So just wanted to point that out.
I definitely appreciate that Gustav. And I think that to Matthew's point, and I probably should have been clear on this when I was sort of introducing the working groups. The hope is that, that these are sort of the areas that, that are generally focused on, but then within each of them, we are talking about the sort of different subpopulations. And the unique needs of different subpopulations. But I think we, we might want to look and do a better job of making that quite explicit in our, in the action plans. The, the feedback is really helpful. And I think I saw Amy's hand up as well. Want to make sure she had a chance to chime in.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks Ally. I guess I have a, I have a, a big picture question slash thought, which is that I think one of the challenges in creating a document that is thorough and, and comprehensive. And I, and I really do feel like this document is, is very, very thorough and very thoughtful. Really appreciate all the outreach and engagement that the team did to, to pull this together. That the, that, the ambition is, is large. And you want to make sure that you can, right, that you can, you can move all these things forward. So I guess I'm just wondering about the benefit. And did you give any thought to identifying priorities? Or kind of lifting up certain things to, to maybe both focus people's attention and to, to clarify for all the departments, like, you know. Again, what were the priorities? I'll shut up. So.
No, no, no. And I think you're, you're, if I'm recalling my next slide correctly, I think you're lining into the next slide actually perfectly. Which, which is sort of thinking through, do you all have recommendations on priorities? I think we, from the working group perspective, felt the urgency, I guess, in the ones that we determined when they would be formed. So really focusing on the state funding and racial equity, starting in the first quarter of FY '21, '22. Trying to sort of format things in priority based on when we, we get them up and running. But I agree, there's a lot here. And so understanding what we think, what you all think has the, the greatest potential for impact or where we really need to be. Ensuring that we are, we, we don't, we don't miss the mark, I think would be incredibly, incredibly valuable feedback for us. So Evan, actually, if you can go to the next slide real quick. I guess we're sort of talking about additional activities rather, of being prioritized for inclusion. So really trying to think about what is there, what could be deprioritized if we really do feel like that there is too much. If we really do feel like that there is too much or sort of clarification that's needed on, on what we believe priorities are. But would actually turn, I know this is unfair, but would actually turn the question back a little bit to, to you all to see where you think, in, in looking through this, where you felt like these were the things we really need to make sure are prioritized and thought about. Emilio, I see your hand up as well.
Thank you. Couple of few things. The working groups are mostly state staff. That makes sense. I, I wonder if there is a space or an opportunity for local representatives to be included. How would that happen? Would we volunteer? Could we add other stakeholders that are not necessarily part of this council? For example, I know that our chief of police would like to be involved in the fifth working group. Don't know if that's even a possibility. Second, I imagine that part of the, the process or the assignment of the working groups would be to identify gaps, if you will, that exist in the delivery of the various services, including potential funding, including support services. For example, I know it's mentioned. It seems to be kind of a given that support services is going to be offered and not explicit outright. Substance abuse, et cetera. So I imagine that those are kind of a precondition to the discussion that would occur at the various working groups, including, like I said, funding and other services available. And then to what extent can I volunteer, me or, or other stakeholders that are locally?
I love the excitement. I will remind you all, you haven't voted to approve this yet. But I think that to the point, what I'm hearing from, from Emilio is, is one, just a quick clarification that the only working group we're recommending right now is state staff only, is the state funding work group. The others, we expect to have robust external stakeholders involved in. I think we need to make that clearer, that, that we felt like we could identify the state departments or start the list of state departments that we felt relevant to the working groups. We have not yet tackled, that I think would want to discuss with this group once it's approved, how to handle the, the sort of scope and scale and who, from the external stakeholder standpoint. But, but just to be quickly, want to make sure that, that we're clear that really the only one that, that H C F C staff are recommending is state staff only, is the, the state funding one to, to provide a space to talk through some of those things. But yeah, I mean, I think in terms of, to Matthew's point, we have not gotten there yet about thinking about sort of the actual development of, of the working groups. We sort of, I think, wanted to make sure the structure felt appropriate to you all before we, we got too far down that, that road. But very much appreciate that folks are already thinking about where they want to plug in people for those conversations. I think that, that to me sounds, makes it seem like it's resonating with you all that these are the right working groups, which is great.
This is J C. So a, a few additional comments. I think I'd like to really echo what Amy had mentioned. I think that there's been a lot of really good work put into a very comprehensive action plan. But I do think, and, and this is not going to be good because I'm going to say, I do think we need to think about priorities, but I don't have any current recommendations on that at this time. So it's a horrible comment to say we should prioritize and then have no solid feedback on that. It, it just seems like a lot. And I will channel our director, Lightborn, where he says, you know, you don't want to boil the ocean, right? So we want to maybe figure out where we want to put some very concerted energy just to make sure that you're yielding the result I think you ultimately want to yield. So I would just, I just wanted to echo those comments because I think they were thoughtful. And then I think maybe to add into the document, a little bit more information around kind of how the work groups will work in regards to what would be provided to the work group, the role of the states versus others. Are they responding to pieces that are in flight? For example, I say that, you know, Cal Aime is, is mentioned in the action plan a significant amount of times for D H C S components. However, those wheels are moving very quickly right now. And so the role of that, the feedback from that group and/or how we're using those work groups to inform hear from local individuals, for example, about those challenges, et cetera. I think there needs to be a little bit more context in the document around the structure, the roles of each individuals in the work group, what would be presented to them prior and kind of the intended outcome of that group. So just some additional, you know, feedback in regards to the structure there in the proposal.
Yeah, I appreciate all of that, J C. And I think that, you know, while not having specific feedback on what to prioritize, hearing loud and clear that it would be good to do a little bit of at least highlighting. I think we also, we're sort of weighing the balance of wanting to make sure that, for lack of a better word, the departments were getting credit for all of the incredible work they have planned. And so we might have gone a little too heavily that direction or sort of need to think about how we signal that differently within the document itself. I think, you know, within the work groups themselves, intended outcomes and things like that. You know, I think we're trying to, to leave them in a space where the work group can really come back and inform the council on what they believe needs to be prioritized and focused on. But really allowing for not just, you know, H C F C staff or, 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 you know, making the determination on what, on what we think needs to happen there, but allowing all of the really critical pieces of, of the state to come in and have that, that discussion before we go too far. But I do think, thinking through how we can sort of frame out a little bit more context around what would these work groups look like, what would folks expect to come in and do? You know, we, we can, we can do a little more thinking on that for, for sure. Matthew, I'm not sure if you have any additional thoughts on, on that piece in particular.
No, I would just echo that. I think that the intention is also to get, to empower the working groups to help define priorities and identify additional activities so that we don't simply have the working groups, a menu of activities to take action on, but rather than the working groups themselves are taking the work even further.
I think I saw another hand and now I've lost it. Jen, is it any objection?
It's Jen. Hi, guys. You know, so this is a great plan. It's a little wild that California hasn't had a plan, right? So, so yay, but also like, oh my gosh. So as we're moving forward, I think what is so important is it's like words on a page until we actually do it. And so targets. It was a game changer for Santa Clara County when we put like numbers and deadlines, right? Numbers of people housed, amounts of money that needs to be allocated, houses built, you know, like. And so I would say for the working groups, specificity and measurable measurability is so important. So because that's how we'll know, right? And that's how we'll demonstrate. And more importantly than how we'll demonstrate to communities and the people that need, right? Need us to do this collectively, that we're serious. So that would be my, and, and we have to fund the things we talk about, right? And, and I know that I'm preaching to the choir with the group that, that crafted this. And so thank you for, for the body of work.
No, I think all of that makes, makes a lot of, a lot of sense. And I think I'm, I was trying quickly as you were talking. We do a little bit of like having the work group go back and, and think about some of those numbers. I think the hope would be, you know, to, to the secretary's introduction remarks. And I think we've mentioned a few times, the hope is sort of, once this is finalized, that we come back a year from now and, and talk to the council about how we think it went. And if we think we can add some additional meat or some additional data points and things like that, once we sort of learn what we learned in the, in the next year. But seeing where we can get some, some additional specificity on, on the charges of the work group before they start meeting, I think we can, we can do some more thinking on that. Because I think that's, we're hearing that from a few of you.
And I would say in that case, the, the funding and programs working group is charged with identifying the, what's being accomplished for rehousing, prevention and diversion, housing creation, sheltering. I don't think we're going to be able to set the targets within the plan itself, but the working group would be reporting back to the council as those targets get set for how much is going to be accomplished through the different funding sources.
Yeah, I was going to chime in. I really appreciate that we're having this conversation about thinking through how to prioritize. Because if we just look at, you know, the slide, slide number eight, where it summarizes that we have five action areas, 15 objectives, 80 activities, five different working groups, right? I think we're trying to make up for years of maybe not, you know, having sort of this coordinated effort. And so what I'm hearing loud and clear from, you know, colleagues on the council is that, you know, let's, but let's be more strategic and, you know, maybe pulling out the sort of key areas of priority for maybe these first two years, but not lose sight of the fact that all of these other activities and objectives are also important. But maybe being a little more sort of realistic about what we might be able to accomplish. It, I was thinking about my mom as I was listening to this conversation and this kind of Spanish refrain of this, you know, this thing that she says, she says, el que mucho abarca, poco aprieta. A person that, you know, wants to do everything, do something like really well in, in one area. And so I think what I'm hearing is, let's, let's pull out those areas where there is good work already happening and sort of elevating it and maybe figure out a way to, to try to prioritize. I think what will, what will be important between now and the March the 23rd date to get there is circling back with each of you to get your sort of perspective on how we're prioritizing, right? Because there's going to be some trade-offs in this process. And we just want to ensure that as we're going through this process, right? That, that we have the, you know, that we're making the, the right, that we're identifying the right priorities. So, you know, maybe I think as it relates to sort of next steps, what I would suggest, you know, to, to Matthew and Allie and the team is, well, you know, we'll come up with a set of proposals for how to prioritize and circle back with council members, maybe individually, and see if we can, you know, get to a prior, a way of prioritizing the work. Because I, I completely agree that I, I think it is important for us to be bold, but to also be reasonable, right? And yeah, so that's good feedback. And I also wanted to just, you know, check because I believe that this is an item where we can also take public comment. And so if council members, Russ, I see your hand is up. Did you want to chime in? No?
I also can't figure out how to do my hand, but this is great. I'll just quickly add one. Oh, you're my real hand. I just, in particular, thinking about the working groups. I just was filled with excitement, but also felt prompted when I saw one, a new one every single quarter. So I echo some thoughts about how to effectively prioritize. But another thing I wanted to lift up is just how we can think about how H D I S might interact with some of these work groups and how we can also use these work groups to advance H D I S. So just wanted to put that in your ear as a bug, because I think there is so much overlap. We can't, we're going to need data to help us understand how successful we're being in these work groups over time. And, and as we set the metrics over time, so finding a way to, to build a bridge to H D I S in each of these settings would be well worth the effort.
That's great.
So I'll add a couple of things. I completely agree with all of that. And I, I think another activity that's really, really important is a communication. I've said this before, is a robust communications plan to prove, to, to showcase and highlight what, what, what we've accomplished. So that we're sending a message to the general public. Somebody said, we have to fund this thing. It comes from taxpayers. Taxpayers want to see the results. We want a great communications plan that, that can highlight what we've accomplished. And oh, by the way, the, the plan, I guess, may be a question or just maybe a statement that whatever we decide on priorities has to be communicated to some way, not just to, to the governor's office, but to, to lawmakers. And their, their, their interests will have to align with ours. I know that most of us get that, but just out for consumption.
And for, for the sake of, of timing, this conversation is incredibly valuable. And Secretary, to your, your point about sort of next steps, you're beautifully leading us in actually into the, the next item. And just, you know, wanting to make sure that we can continue the conversation holistically with, with this group and, and potentially take comments at, at the end of these two action items on the action planets, or these two items on the action plan itself. Because this is, I feel like this is one of the best, more intense, intensely engaged conversations we've had with you all, which we are really excited about. So I hate to shut that down. And we have, I think we purposely built in a little bit of buffer at the end to, to keep the conversation going. So I don't want to, don't want to shut it down, but also want to make sure that we let you all know that, to, to the secretary's point, actually, we scheduled some of those follow-ups already. And there's some additional items going on for the next month that we're happy to, to talk a little bit about, too. So anything else on, on this piece to date before we sort of move to? Want to make sure.
So I think, so the next item on the agenda is just, you know, to, to walk through the process, right? Between now and, you know, March the 23rd. And then I think what we'll go ahead and open for public comment and see if we have members of the public that would like to also provide their perspective or offer input. And so I feel like you've already kind of shared the timeline, but if you'd like to just quickly go through what's next. And, and then Evan, I'm going to ask if you can help us open up the public comment portion.
Thank you, Secretary. So sorry, just to confirm, we're moving to the next agenda item?
Yes, item number four, process for approval.
Great, thank you.
Great. And I think I'm going to walk us through these next steps. So Evan, if you want to go to the next slide, that'd be great. Okay, so this is kind of the between now and March, which will come up on us all very quickly. So just want to flag, we are intending that between now and, say, around March 16th, when we need to be able to issue another version of the plan, ready for the March 23rd meeting, we're going to be doing final planning meetings with the state departments. Those are all being scheduled right now to determine the final list and language regarding the activities to confirm roles, timeframes and performance measures. I'm going to propose that part of how we deal with prioritization is we also have those conversations, seek the department's input on which of their activities they feel are the highest priority. And that maybe rather than expecting that we drop a lot of activities out of the plan, we instead tier them in how they're presented. So we present the highest priority activities and then additional important activities within each section. So that we show the full range of all the work the state is engaging in, that we make sure, absolutely sure that we reflect all of the department members on the council and all having a role in implementing the plan. But that we do give some sense of where, where the activities are expected to have the most impact and where the most effort needs to lie. So working with the departments to help think through which of their activities that they're lead for, would they suggest are the highest priority? And also absolutely confirming that they expect that they will be doing work related to that activity in the next two years. So that we're not putting anything in that department is flagged and we don't think we have the ability to do anything related to that. So that's how I'd suggest that we think about moving forward on prioritization is trying to still stay pretty comprehensive so that it conveys the full range of what's happening. But we, we clearly indicate within each objective, which activities are the highest priorities or which are additional activities that'll be implemented. But we can talk further about that as we go through the departmental conversations. Partly I'm suggesting that because we still have to do final revisions to the document and embed all of this feedback and input that we get through those final conversations into the document. And we presented it in a relatively clean format for you all, but we are expecting to do a better layout that is going to have more graphics and make more of a gauging document. So we're hoping that will happen between now and the March meeting as well. With the goal then of distributing a revised version, both to the council and publicly posted on or around March 16th, so that you all have adequate time and the public has adequate time to review the document ahead of the meeting. Our expectation would be that we come to that meeting with a recommendation to adopt the action plan. I think there would be the opportunity for minor adjustments to language or presentation of things that could get reflected in the decision to act on that recommendation or not. So some final cleanup and very minor adjustments, but hoping that we're not adopting a plan with the expectation that adopting a plan with the expectation that there's still a lot more work to be done on it. And then we'll start to hopefully, if we're able to move through that process, next slide, please. Then we'll be moving forward into launching the implementation. One of the things that the secretary has committed to is wanting to engage secretaries of the agencies across the administration into a dialogue related to the action plan. And it's the importance of all of the agencies working together. So an expectation that we may convene the secretaries of agencies following the plan to really ensure it's effective launch and an understanding of the priorities. There also need to be work done to educate stakeholders about the plan and its activities. And that's, in my mind, an important part of the transparency and the accountability that we've tried to build into this entire process. And then we will be really detailing out the ongoing accountability processes of the performance measurement, the tracking, reporting, trying to keep that pretty streamlined, but effective enough that we can tell whether especially the highest priority activities are moving forward successfully. There'll be more data analyses and reporting and some regular updates at the council meetings. So that hopefully moving forward, the council meetings may be really driven by elements within the action plan and understanding where there's progress and where there's challenges and how to move forward. And then I think a big piece of this is, and the secretary touched upon this, is that this really is a culture of continuous improvement. So that we're refining the action plan on an ongoing basis. Expectation is that before the start of the fiscal year 2223, the plan would be revised, especially to get to more specific activities that would be implemented in that fiscal year. And then as we've touched upon, the, the working groups really are both driving specific activities, but also charged with identifying new strategies and actions. And that's also how we continue to, to strengthen the work and further achieve the vision for the action plan that's been described. So it is a, I feel like I need to put my stress baseball cap on after some of this conversation. It is a tight timeline that we've got to try to move through very quickly. But the feedback today has been really incredibly helpful. And I think we can find ways to, to address it within the action plan to some degree. And then also just want people to recognize the action plan as one document. And there's other materials and ways of describing the actual plan that can be supplemental that can help zero in on some of the issues that the, the action plan might not be able to carry fully in and of itself. And I think I'll turn to Ally's or anything else you'd like to flag around kind of the next steps of the process from here.
No, I really liked your reference about the stress cap. No, I think, you know, I know we, we've lost JC and unfortunately, I think we are set to maybe lose one other council member here at 3:30. And I do know we had asked the departments to also come prepared to talk about sort of their outstanding areas of activities that don't yet have, that's sort of how they're getting those to completion or over the finish line and their, and their plans for that or, or sort of other activities they might be considering.
Did we lose Ally?
He has frozen for me as well. Yes.
Yeah. So I think she was inviting council members. If you had any additional updates based on the conversations, this is really an opportunity to do so. Let's just maybe open it up.
This is Corinne from Department of Social Services. I'm happy to chime in, chime in. Yeah, I just, I want to reiterate my appreciation to the council, the staff of the council for the work to date. And we are reviewing all of the items and we'll have feedback for some of you all on that. Want to just highlight, I think, the value of collaboration in this process and the, you know, ability to provide input and to iterate is so important in these processes. I want to, I think Russell brought this up also, but I appreciate that there's an opportunity to, to use data to move these sort of create really measurable outcomes in our, in our plan and also to, to share our successes and challenges as we go. I loved some language that you all used in the action plan. You called, you highlighted housing focused interim housing settings, which I really, that was the first time I'd heard that and really appreciated that very much. When we think about our shelters and non-housing settings, thinking them as, thinking of them as housing, housing focused settings. And then Ally had asked us to think about areas we might want to lift up as additional activities. And I think the two for me are thinking about specific activities. I know we have a working group, but also thinking about specific activities that are associated with youth and transitional age youth. And especially addressing the unique needs of youth that are involved in the child welfare system or probation involved youth. So I'm happy to do some brainstorming on that one and propose something. And then the second is really thinking about the goal may be something like identifying strategies to better serve older adults and people with disabilities in all parts of our homeless system of care. So this would likely fit under action area one, as we think about our systems. This has come up for us in particular, as we've implemented project room key, because we've served such a significant number of seniors and people with underlying health conditions that make them particularly vulnerable to COVID. And how we as a system of care can really meet those needs of those, specific needs of those populations when it comes to long-term housing stability. Both in terms of supporting people to live independently in community-based settings, in their own independent living settings, and also in creating choice and, and real opportunity for people in licensed settings as well. So look forward to talking about those additions with the, with the theme. Those are, those are, that's my feedback for now. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's been such a, just a huge lift and really happy to be here today with such a wonderful draft plan in front of us.
And maybe I don't see Ally back on yet. So maybe I'll jump in a little bit. And Julie, I might need to turn to you to help me make sure we touch upon everybody. Gustavo, I see that you have your hand up. So would you like to jump in for HCD?
Yeah. Echo Corinne and just the great collaboration with the staff of HCFC. HCC has identified as a lead agency for 20 of the draft activities. There are four activities that we are kind of in the process of finalizing, like four additional on top of the 20 that we already identified. And I just want to just mention briefly that at least three of them are, well, let me, let me address two of them of the four, because I think they're, they're critically important. As, as some of you may know, HCD leads the efforts to review and approve housing elements for all jurisdictions across the state. And I believe that you know, I, I think it will be really important to strengthen the sections of local housing elements dedicated to people experiencing homelessness. And I, we are committed to being much more intentional about how we review those housing elements for every jurisdiction, how they are addressing their interventions around prevention and intervention around people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. And so that's an activity that we believe will be extremely helpful to undertake as part of this plan. The other is to continue studying alternative delivery methods to strengthen rehousing case management in the wake of disasters. HCD is, has been increasingly more and more involved in both the issue of prevention and rebuilding, reconstruction, given the terrible natural disasters that we continue to experience in the state. And I, I think in many of these disasters, you know, people experiencing homelessness post disasters, you know, get overlooked. And we, we want to make sure that that is part of another activity that we can undertake. So again, all in all, we are working together with HFC staff on the 20 activities that we have, this additional four are kind of on the, on the consideration table right now. And hopefully we can finalize those before the action plan.
Great. And Ally, I think I saw you jump back on. So are you?
Hey, I'm sorry about that. I've had internet issues for the last week, so I'm not entirely sure. So apologies for that. I cut out right as I was finishing a thought. Um, so I think Corinne and Gustavo have, have both gone. I know JC had to hop off. But I see Don and Tox, your hands are both up. So Don, if you want to start with your update?
Sure. I'll just be, I'll be really quick. I was just going to point out that Caltech is right in the middle of its getting ready for its mid-year budget update for 2021 for its board in towards the end of March. And we're also in the business planning cycle for 2122. And so we're in the process of developing our production numbers. And for those of you that don't know, you know, most of Caltech-based programs are designed to increase the supply or preservation of affordable housing units. So we should have no problem providing, you know, some, some production and performance measure targets around those, those activities. I, I am curious, and I'd like to talk to you guys offline about sort of the timing of some of that data for 2122 in that it's a little bit awkward to provide you data that hasn't been adopted or approved by the board of directors, which won't occur until May. So we can probably figure out a, a solution for that. But I, I think I'd like to have a conversation about that. As far as additional activities that I would like considered, Caltech Bay was tasked with the deployment of national mortgage settlement funds last year by the governor's office. It was $300 million that is being deployed for both credit counseling and mortgage assistance. And both of these programs are really sort of designed to assist renters and homeowners in order to keep them from getting displaced from their housing. And so I think there's some definite connection to what we're trying to do here. And I think we would be happy to provide data on what our anticipated or estimated number of families to be served through these, these activities is going to be. And then ultimately report on the results of those. And that's sort of, I mean, that's just high level. I mean, we're, we're in the throes of working through all the numbers and the different programs. And so, you know, but we will be happy to provide that info.
Great. That, that's fantastic. And yes, we definitely will be, we can talk through that in our, in our one-on-one and how to navigate some of those. But I really appreciate that, that update. That's great. And then Tox, I think you have your hand raised as well. If you want to provide your update?
Yeah, very briefly, I've just got three, three quick items. But, but before that, just want to commend you, Ally, and and Matthew and the secretary for all the work and everybody else that's been involved as well in, in putting this, this plan together. Heard somebody make the comment before that. It's surprising that we didn't have a plan already. And it is surprising. But I think finally we were there and a lot of work obviously cut out for everybody involved in this effort. So kudos to you guys for assembling something that we can start to, we can start to invite, inviting to and, and, and address that these, these key issues. So three, three quick things that I want to mention. Number one, continue to keep in mind Caltrans's opportunities for using our right of way for emergency shelters. We ran into a bit of a, a roadblock with the previous administration in Washington. Obviously new leadership there now. We're expecting the tune will change a little bit. They've kind of slightly signaled that they'll be more open to this. Nothing formal yet. They haven't said to us, yeah, you can, you know, you can use your right of way for, for temporary emergency shelters, but that's what we're expecting. So, so keep that in mind as part of the plans and the communication. And number two, the, the response plans, the homelessness response plans, I think we strongly believe at Caltrans that it should keep in mind the fact that a lot of people are on the states right away. On and that the response plan should consider people on the right of way and not just on locals, local right of way or local streets, but the fact that states, state right of way should be considered a part of that. And, and the work should be done in partnership. Cause I think a lot of times what happens is, you know, local government say, oh, that's, that's on the states right away. That has nothing to do with us, that state needs to figure that part out. I think it should all be done in coordination and include the state. And third and final, along the same, similarly along the same lines, you know, any implementation of, you know, action plans and decision-making and accountability and funding should include, we, we believe should include Caltrans in that mix. So as you know, the implementation plans moving forward, even though we're obviously a, a transportation entity, we, we know we play a role in the housing issues that the state faces. So include us in the accountability measures, but include us with resources as well. As resources have been determined for how to address, how to address the issues and concerns. So just, just three quick things, but very excited that we're finally at this place and, and kudos to you guys for all the hard work and putting the plan together.
Thanks for that, Tox. That's, that's all really helpful. And I think more questions to ask on our, on our one-on-ones of, of making sure we, we mark you all appropriately within within the activities themselves. Appreciate you, you flagging that you need to be included more. That's, that's always the, we appreciate hearing that more than the alternatives. So thank you. And then I think Russell is still on rest from Calvet. If you want to do your update, are you there? Yes. Russell, I'm not sure if you're able to unmute if you're talking.
I was trying, sorry.
Okay.
There too. No, I didn't. I honestly, I didn't have any other notes to share. I always like to make a plug for vets or additional activities. I think many of you know that the US Department of Veterans Affairs, next to the Department of Defense is the second, USDBA is the second largest federal government entity in the nation. And so, you know, in any of those additional activities, probably a good idea to include some of our federal partners and figuring out some of the things that the USDBA does pretty well. I mean, there's so many robust programs. Again, just making sure we include all the right partners and getting all the proper resources in the right places for, for the vets.
Great. And then Gina from CalOES. Gina, are you still on?
I am. Sorry about that. Yes, I am. Sorry about that. Fine. How are you? I don't really have the updates right now. We're working through the action plan. I met with Al, who's helping me out with that. It's going to be for us a heavy list, a lift at the moment due to, we are a lot active, as you know, activations with the vaccination sites and we're in heavy mode right now. So, but we also, I know that that's going to include our recovery area. And recovery is of course crazy busy too, but we're going to do what we can. One of the things on our homeless side is we are going to be experiencing a decrease in our victim services funds come 2021. You know, we're going to go from in the 200 millions down into the 100 million. So that's going to affect some of our programs. How it's going to affect some of our programs? We don't know yet. We're trying to come up with a five-year plan to see whether or not some of these programs we're going to keep and just reduce the amount of recipients. But these do involve some of our homeless programs are state funded. We do have some that are federally funded. So we're taking a look at that. And hopefully by the next, our next meeting, I'll be able to know exactly what we're talking about as far as funds go and how we're going to approach that once we make the recommendations to the director.
Great. Thanks Gina. And yeah, our, our one-on-one, we can talk a little bit more too about sort of how to flesh out what's there and how to prioritize, given what we know what has been a very, very overwhelming year for you all.
Yeah, but we do a lot of information. I know one of the things California for All or LUSTO's program, we do have a tremendous amount of information there, statistical information and how we've done our reach out in that area. So I mean, we have a lot of good information. It's, yeah, it's just timing right now. It's, you know, for us, as you know, it's always a perfect storm. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Secretary, I think that's it from departmental updates. So if you move to public comment, I think we're ready.
Perfect. Thank you, Ally. Let's, let's go ahead and go to public comments. I see that we have two hands raised. Evan, can you go ahead and facilitate this portion?
Absolutely. Thank you, Secretary. So as a reminder to those making public comments, you'll have three minutes to complete your, to make your comment. If you're joined on a computer, you can indicate you'd like to comment by pressing the raised hand or if you're on a telephone. Uh, or if you're on a telephone, uh, telephone, you can press star nine. Uh, so it looks like our first comment, uh, we have a comment from Natalie Kumura.
Hi there. Um, yeah, I'm calling from the city of Ontario and I, I, first of all, I want to commend you all for the work you've done on this plan. A couple of things I, and I may have missed something because I was reading through it back and forth, but I'm, I'm concerned that there isn't a clear acknowledgement of the decades of failing. And, and this isn't to blame anyone here in this room, but we've had a lack of investment in housing and human services for, for extremely long period of time. And so the state is really doing a lot to catch up. And I'm concerned when you're talking about this in terms of multi-year goals, that we're also ensuring that we're sort of getting level set on what we need to be investing in our systems on an ongoing basis. So that's something I would, I would love to see in this. And maybe this com- commission or council can't make that commitment, but from our standpoint, if we're going to be trying to do this work, we can't proceed without the certainty of funding to make these things happen. So for example, Project Rimkey wasn't something that, um, our city felt like we could move forward on because we're looking down the road on our ability to sustain the investment over time. So, um, so that, that's one thought that came to mind. The other is I just, um, want a second funding for Caltrans because it helps us in trying to coordinate our response to accountants on, on, uh, Caltrans property, but they're short-staffed. And so having more people available to us could help us, um, get, uh, help to folks living in those areas that aren't particularly safe. And, um, and then also I wanted to say, uh, yes to the communication planning. Do, do ensure that you have, um, resources to coordinate the communication of what you're getting done here because it's so important. We've needed this for so long and I'm just really grateful to the council for doing this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so next we have a, uh, comment from Joe Coletti.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to encourage the council to do something concerning trauma-informed design and care. And what I want to encourage is that that something would be adhering to a trauma-informed design and care approach should be included in California legislation concerning homelessness. And requiring a trauma-informed design and care approach should be a condition to receiving homelessness funding. Ollie, in her presentation, uh, there was a, a slide that noted aligning state activities with housing-first approaches. Well, how about aligning state activities with trauma-informed design and care activities? The, just wanted to note lastly, that housing-first can be the model here in terms of legislation. By that, I mean this, lastly, that housing-first, you may know, was a burgeoning best practice during the first decade of this century. During the past decade, housing-first was widely accepted as an evidence-based best practice, including the state of California. The council was created, right, to oversee the implementation of housing-first policies, guidelines and regulations. Well, trauma-informed design and care was a, was a burgeoning best evidence-based practice during the past decade. And now trauma-informed design and care will likely be widely accepted as an evidence-based best practice during this decade. So adhering to a trauma-informed design and care approach should be included in California legislation concerning homelessness as a requirement to receiving funding now. I mean, what we're going to see increasingly happen during this decade and want the council to get out in front of it, and that is this, that trauma-informed design and care is going to be looked at along with housing-first as two sides of the same coin. So why not we get out in front of it, asking the council to get out in front of it now?
Thank you for your comment. Uh, we have a comment from Michelle Smith.
Yes, hi, thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to comment. Um, and thanks for the detailed presentation on the plan. I'm excited that the state is moving forward with the plan. Um, and I, I'm hopeful that there's going to be a lot of progress made from that. Um, and so my comment is in relation to that, to the plan. I actually have three comments. Uh, the first one being, um, just r- a reminder that California is such a diverse state with so many different, um, economies, geographical layouts. Um, and so that I encourage you as you're working through, uh, goals and objectives of the plan to not only look at our large urban areas, but also those in rural areas because the outcomes will be, uh, very different. Um, and so there, there may need to be a way to balance that. My next comment is, um, I would hope that there is some way that the council can engage the state funders. So for example, HCD, um, or other departments that have funding for homelessness, like DHS, that there's some sort of requirements for, uh, cities and counties to participate in housing-first, to participate in things like Joe Coletti mentioned, the trauma-informed care. Because when we're, um, dealing with meeting either state goals or federal goals, when it comes to boots on the ground and, and local jurisdictions aren't moving in that, those directions or having to meet the same sort of goals, it's really difficult, uh, to accomplish the goal set out for us. And then finally, um, as a COC rep- representative, I am just getting ready to submit our system performance, uh, measures for nineteen twenty, fiscal year nineteen twenty, to HUD. And they have been significantly impacted by COVID nineteen. They're, they're pretty hard to look at our outcomes over this, the past, uh, twelve months. And so I would encourage you all that as you work through some numerical goals in the plan, that you plan for the significant hits to our system that are about to, to come forward. So not just looking at, uh, data from, you know, the last AHR that was presented or whatnot, but we really need to look forward at this, the devastating impacts that are about to hit us and, and what is our plan to come up from there. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, we have a comment from a, um, telephone call in. So we have a call-in user, uh, you should be able to unmute your line. All right, uh, we will come back to that. Uh, it looks like we have a comment from, uh, all right, let's see here. Um, comment from a phone number ending in, uh, six, seven, zero, zero. Uh, I believe you may have to press star six to unmute. All right, uh, moving on to the next, we'll come back. Uh, so we have a comment from Anna Johnson.
Hi, uh, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak in public comment. Um, I'm with John Burton Advocates for Youth and, um, have reviewed the action plan. And I was just excited to see all of the inclusion of Senate Bill nine eighteen and the youth recommendations and working groups. Um, I appreciated Alexis's comment earlier about making sure there's equitable, um, representation of youth from across the state and consideration of how, um, those workgroup members will be sort of recruited or, um, selected. Um, I also wanted to just, uh, express my excitement around the HDIS data system. We recently did an analysis of the, uh, Home Key Awards that were, that went out. And, uh, similar to what we've seen in national funding trends and state fundings and spending, uh, we, we see that youth are often left behind as a targeted service population. And unfortunately, the same was true with Home Key. Um, if we realize that just point five percent of that funding did target unaccompanied homeless youth, uh, yet they make up nine percent of our homeless individuals. And seventy-nine percent of them were identified as being unsheltered. So during this time of pandemic and pandemic response, um, they, uh, remained unsheltered and didn't receive the benefit of that program. Just, um, two projects, actually named them as specific service entities. So we are seeing that without a specific attention to youth, they are often, um, left out. And we can definitely change that with these workgroups and with the data system analyzing the way funding and services has gone out and then advising the, uh, decision-makers in our state about the results of that. So we are looking forward to the use of HDIS and disaggregating service information by the youth population and college students as well and current and former foster youth or system-involved youth to note those disparities. Um, we do see that, uh, there are also, when we analyze the Home Key, um, awards, there were clear beneficiaries and then there were, there were folks in areas of the state that received zero, um, award amounts. And again, that can often be common in our homelessness, uh, program and spending. And so I think the data system is going to help again to make sure that we don't have, um, areas that are neglected in our planning and service delivery and, and access. So we looked at the service, um,
Thank, thank you, Anna. I'd like to ask you to please make your final comment.
Oh, sure, thank you. Um, we looked at the service awards, um, by areas of the state with the largest unaccompanied homeless youth populations. And Santa Cruz City and County Wasonville did not receive a Home Key Award at all. And then of the other ten jurisdictions with highest level of youth homelessness, only one of them, uh, specified unaccompanied youth as a service population. So we see from the data that we've been pulling that this is a clear pattern and we hope to see more coming from, uh, the workgroups and suggestions as more of these analyses happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have a comment from Helene Schneider.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Um, and thank you for taking the time to do this great work. And I think I want to echo Jennifer Leving when she said it's amazing, state of California has not had a plan up to this point because of being as big of a, and diverse that it is. So, uh, kudos to you for getting to this point. You may know Cheryl's quote, "If you don't know where you are going, any road will get you there." And so we have to have a roadmap and I think this is, uh, a great start here. Um, I just wanted to briefly say hello and thank you for all the work that people, both on the council as well as those listening today, have been doing day in, day out, um, on this work, especially during the global pandemic. Uh, and just to reiterate our support and my support, um, as USICH, I should have announced myself, sorry. Um, I'm the regional coordinator with the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness covering California. And, uh, whatever we can do to help assist as a federal partner in navigating the new, uh, directions happening with, with the funding or, um, other forms of, of partnership that we can do, please, uh, reach out and, and work with, with me and I can help to connect you with other federal partners as needed. I know many of you talk to a lot of federal partners as we move forward. So, um, I just want to be a resource for you. And I'll just end again with another quote, uh, one of my favorites from Nelson Mandela. If it always seems impossible until it's done. And I think we, we are on a good path here, um, is to keep the faith and, and to keep things moving forward. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have a comment, uh, next from Kim Lewis.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Kim Lewis, representing the California Coalition for Youth. And I just want to say really pleased to see all the, um, effort and work that's gone into the action plan and loving the direction you guys are taking this and as well as the comments earlier today around young people, um, especially for members of the council. I, I really just want to say, if, if you want to prioritize the work anywhere, I would again say you should prioritize your work focusing on young people because they are our future. And if we don't do things for them, they will become our chronically homeless adult population. So to have the biggest bang for your buck would be to target your resources there. Um, and just really want to elevate the, the conversation and what needs to be happening around economic supports and self-sufficiency and the work of bringing in your partners at the Labor Agency and the Workforce Development Boards to this conversation. Because I don't think we can really have a discussion around wealth and, and asset building if we don't really talk about employment and economic supports. And, you know, we know what happened in the last recession with our, you know, BIPOC, um, young people being very disadvantaged and disconnected, um, especially from education. And we know that by not even having your GED or high school diploma, you're more at risk of experiencing homelessness later. And so I think, you know, the struggles that for young people who are their junior, senior years of doing distance learning, you know, and being maybe not showing up in the systems and just disappearing from roles, we really have to be concerted efforts to ensure that we don't continue to grow this number because young people are such an undercount to begin with. And the point-in-time count is, you know, the best measure we have. But we also know that it's missing so many youth because it doesn't capture couch surfing and it doesn't capture, you know, um, youth and, and the various, you know, experiences that they have of homelessness. So we will be submitting some written comments to help you finish out this plan for adoption, hopefully next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like we have a couple additional public comments. Uh, we have one from, uh, Ludmilla.
Hello. Yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Joe Coletti for bringing up, uh, the subject of trauma-informed design and care. Um, and I do want to say that it is, um, my experience and observation that homelessness can come about um, from really a more of a cluster of things. It's not just one thing of, of losing one's home, but there's a, a layered thing where different situations come together. Some of those are obviously housing, losing a house for some reason, um, or situation, trauma, um, finance, aging, health, um, addiction can be a factor, as we know. Um, and really, um, as far as, so looking at, uh, program and programs that address, they really kind of, uh, maybe have a conversation, a very general conversation with somebody who is struggling or is in danger of losing their house, you know, kind of which of those factors are affecting them and how can they be supported in those? And I think you'll have a lot better and, um, it, it'll be much quicker outcomes and, and cost a lot and, and cost a lot less um, if the correct kind of help is being given to the person. And I, and I mean by correct, I mean, what is it that they are self-identifying as being what they need help with on the road out? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have one additional public comment from, uh, Javon Wilks.
Am I on?
Yes.
All right. Uh, first, Lois and Ally, thank you and the rest of the team of the HFC for, uh, putting together a plan. It's, it's, um, it's that time. And, you know, as Kim, as the young person before, as Anna and, and other folks, you know, talk about trauma-informed and the, the impacts on young people that, um, are, you know, Black Indigenous people of color and, and are LGBTQ, um, young people, there's a, a high impact that we can have when we prioritize them. Um, you know, the data show, uh, CCY has just done, oh, by the way, I'm Javon Wilks with the California Coalition for Youth. And we have a survey that we did with a three hundred young people kind of showing their, their need during COVID. And we know that there's been some disparities in, in, in regards to reaching our young people even before this pandemic, especially, you know, considering the last recession and, and the impact it had on young people. So I just really want to voice and really bring to, to, to light as a young- So I just really want to voice and really bring to 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 light as a young, as someone who experienced homelessness as a young person, when we prevent and end youth homelessness, right, that is our greatest solution to ending, right, and preventing adult chronic homelessness. And I truly believe we have that moment, we can meet that moment with a severe and intense intentionality to really elevate the young people, having them a part of the decision-making process, and elevating them with the investments that we bring forth to really support them as we are going to, you know, continue kind of facing the impacts that COVID has had on us. And the opportunities that are to come are beautiful when we elevate our young people. So again, when we prevent and end youth homelessness, we are really solving the bigger issue at hand of chronic adult homelessness. So really, thank y'all for your time. Thank you for, you know, putting this together, this action plan. And really looking forward to being of service, being an ally, supporter as best as I can as someone previous, as someone with previous experience and with someone who have access to young people to really help develop the opportunities ahead along with service providers throughout the state of California. So thank you so much for your time and for this this opportunity to really elevate the needs.
Thank you for your comment. Secretary, it looks like we have one more. Can we take that now as well? Thank you. It looks like we have a comment from Lori Flores.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me comment. I just wanted to echo some sentiment shared by two of the council members during their comments. And it has to do with our aging population. I do think that there is an argument to be made about having a working group focused on that population, not only because of their medical needs or their mobility impairment, but also that it's difficult to increase income and return to work as other age groups might be able to do. And many times, the housing navigation or pathways to housing rely on subsidies that are not ongoing, that are not very, that are not long-term, like rapid rehousing, and it's just not an option for this group. And aside from the limited housing options and subsidy options, the the interim housing and shelter options may not be equipped to handle the unique care needs of this population as well. Support staff is often focused on housing navigators or case managers, social workers, but not necessarily care attendants, which, you know, many of us feel are a needed asset for those programs. So I just wanted to advocate for more focus on our aging population as a unique group. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm seeing no more public comments on this item.
Thank you, Evan. Thank you so much. And thank you to everyone that has joined us today for the meeting, particularly those individuals that were able to participate during the public comment. I think I was looking at the overall sort of numbers and at the height of attendance, we had close to 150 people join us today. So we very much appreciate your participation, your feedback and your continued engagement. I do want to share for those of you that would like to continue listening into the conversation about how the state is continuing to prioritize homelessness, particularly during this pandemic. There is a joint Senate information hearing that is scheduled for tomorrow morning. And so just would encourage you all to to tune in and listen to to the joint hearing that's scheduled for tomorrow. I know we have, we're at time at four o'clock, but I would like our HCFC executive officer, Julie Lowe, to provide maybe a five-minute update. Julie, if if you can quickly go through, I know we have a lot for you to share. If you can quickly go through that, we will defer the legislative update to our next council meeting. And then we'll wrap up. Turning it over to you, Julie.
Gotcha. Thank you, Secretary, and good afternoon, council members. I will try to rush through this, but get to the highlights. So to begin, I wanted to address the California State Auditor findings. As many of you are aware, the state auditors provided their findings about two weeks ago. HCFC was made aware of the audit being focused on a sample of five COCs and the findings included ended up including a broader set of recommendations. First, HCFC wants to acknowledge that the work that many COCs have been doing, which has been especially hard, given the year, we're about a year into a global pandemic. And that I, as I move into our updates, much of our work is in service of having the tools to bring to our shared work with our local partners. Somewhat bittersweet and based on this very excellent meeting is the timing of these auditor findings in relation to HCFC's priorities, which have for months been to complete our necessary stakeholder engagement process and report backs to this body around the action plan so that we can get underway with implementing it. Similarly, we have been building HDIS for the last 12 weeks. We've been attempting to build it for over that period of time. And central to the recommendations in our audit findings are both to approve our action plan, which I I'm very optimistic we're on our way towards, and also to get HDIS launched. And so it's a good segue into an update about that. We will be ready to launch beta by the end of March and to preview for our council members when we reconvene next month. We are incredibly grateful again to COCs who have dedicated staff time and effort to assuring we have the data in hand. As of this afternoon, we have about 95% of all COCs in, which is just astounding considering we did it in 12 weeks. We will have data through the end of last year, through the end of December, for a period of several years. We also want to note that for those of you who have not been tracking HDIS day and night like us, it is a system that at its core is about improving our shared data-driven response to reduce and end homelessness. We are collecting data from all the local COCs and securely deduplicating and cross-matching individuals accessing services across the state. So with with the beta version, we'll bring a variety of data to the public that range from demographic and geographic characteristics of people seeking services to more complex data to illuminate system efficiencies and possible inefficiencies that will inform a coordinated response. And finally, we are committed to continuing to work with COCs on this matter through making tools available to them and working with them to improve data quality and a data culture. Next, I'll move to our, some really fun news about some new team members. Before I share new news of our team members, I'd be remiss in not plugging that HCFC is hiring. Please do go to the HCFC website. HCFC is a growing entity and we need good humans to help us advance this work. I want to introduce a couple people. First, we have Jeannie McKendry. She joins us as HCFC's, oh, she just popped up, as HCFC's very first legislative specialist and is working with Amy and Miles closely and getting to know folks. Jeannie comes to us from CDSS where she honed her expertise of services and approaches to reduce and end homelessness. And we're just thrilled to have her on board. Next, I'm happy to share the news. He's not on this call officially. He starts next week. We do have Victor Duran, who is wrapping up his role, Duran, my mistake, is wrapping up his role on the leadership team at the California Department of Rehabilitation. And will be leading our HEAP and HAP teams starting next week. So we are excited and anticipate he will help us move our work forward. And finally, a little bit of news on HEAP and HAP, which Victor will will, moving forward, be able to deliver, is that we have annual, we anticipate having annual reports, our annual report available, okay, available next week. We're in the midst of contracting with our HAP TA providers. We're working through finalizing three contracts in the areas of racial equity, youth, permanent housing. More will come on that, but we expect grantees to be receiving this support by by the end of spring. And the three contracts all told total up to somewhere around $4 million. And with that, I will pass it back to the secretary to close this up.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. And great report in five minutes.
Was it? Yes.
Very much appreciated. Very much appreciate your leadership and glad that you plugged in that we're continuing to hire. So this brings us to the end of our meeting. Thank you all so much for joining us. I think this was probably one of our most robust engaging HCFC council meetings by far. And so I really hope that we continue this level of momentum and energy as we, you know, continue meeting and doing our best to prevent and end homelessness. I do want to mention for those of you that have joined us that all of the materials that were presented during today's meeting will be posted on the council's website. And so they will be available for you all to access. Do also want to plug that there is a state website that has been developed that includes information for individuals experiencing housing instability and needing additional resources. The website is housingiski.com. And then just on our screen, we have several other resources available for individuals, including follow us on social media. We are trying to do our best to use and leverage social media to share our progress, share stories of impact and just stay connected with all of you. So with that, have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you for joining us. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you.